...at fire, but again, because of the number of candidates, we have to keep at a certain pace.
I understand.
Since the primary, I'm wondering, what have you done to further prepare for the job, to get more familiar with the county government as it's operating today, or with the Home Rule Charter?
Well, I think I'm familiar with the county government as it operates today. My attempts to educate myself regarding the Home Rule Charter have involved serving on Personnel Committee and attending various Transition Committee meetings. I've also talked on numerous occasions with people who serve on the committees on an individual basis and read the Charter a great number of times in order to try to gain a hold on it and what we are obligated to do and not to do.
And given the time that you've put into that, do you have a sense of whether the Transition Committee is on pace with its many responsibilities to help the new council make a smooth transition? Do you have specific concerns at this point about its activities?
As I see it, from my time there, and I will say however, I did miss seven weeks, I was ill, but in the time that I spent there, I seem to believe that the council, the Transition Committee, has a pretty firm grasp on what they are preparing to do, how to help those that are elected in November make a smooth movement forward. Because from November to December, January, you know, with Thanksgiving and Christmas going to be limited in time, they're going to have an awful lot of work. And of course, the first and the most particular thing that they have to be concerned with is selecting the manager.
If elected, you mentioned that you're a retiree. How much time do you expect to dedicate to the council post?
Well, I'd have as much time as would be required if it was...I have not placed any time limits on myself as far as the council is concerned, realizing full well that this is a completely new venture for us and that we're starting from scratch. It's going to take probably more time than anybody really anticipates. So in that regard, I have firmly committed myself and has my family to making myself available at all times.
I'm going to ask why. Why do you want to do this at this point in your life?
You know, I've been in government service probably from the day I graduated high school. I joined the Navy at the time when it was a draft. I served my time in the Navy, went to college. Upon graduation, I became a teacher, which I considered to be a public service. I certainly didn't do it for money because I'm not good at mathematics. In 1952, I could have got a job with Johnson &amp; Johnson at $6,400. Instead, I waited three years to graduate from Wilkes to get a job at $4,500. So mathematics wasn't my strong point, especially with money. But I thought that I was doing something as a public service, as a teacher. And then in 1975, I ran for Mayor of Swiresville and said, someone said to me, "Why?" And I said, "Why not?" You know, I taught social studies. I always believed, and I still do believe, that everybody should take an opportunity to get involved in government and offer whatever they have within themselves to make things a little bit better. And then I ran in 1980 and was Commissioner for four years, very proud of that time, especially because when you did things as a Commissioner, you saw the results of your actions almost immediately. And it was so rewarding. It wasn't like teaching an eighth grade student where you had to wait four years to see if the work you put in, if that kid graduated. With a Commissioner, if you did something, it seemed like it just took no time at all in order to see the results of it. And I worked very hard and the time that I put into it, the first two months were kind of difficult. I went through a period of being a double dipper, as everybody was calling me, because I was teaching and a Commissioner. And we moved the meetings to the evenings in order to accommodate the public. And they complained that it was done solely to accommodate me. Well, it was to accommodate both. Today, they want to have the meetings in the evening rather than the daytime. So in February, I left teaching and I became a full-time Commissioner because I honestly felt within my heart that if I was going to do something good, I was going to be just that one job. And I wanted to be a good Commissioner. At the end of the four years, I left. We had a surplus of about a half a million dollars. I went into the private sector. I guess I did rather well. I was working in insurance, and even at that, I felt as though it was a service, helping people out with their problems that they had with insurance. And then I was asked to come back to Luzerne County in the Assessment Office because they were having some problems. And I was more than happy to do so because once again, I just felt like my calling was in government. I really, really enjoyed the time that I had. So I worked there for nine and a half years. Unfortunately, I did too well of a job in cleaning up the problems in the office. Some of the people that were in charge were part of the cleanup and they didn't appreciate it, so they eliminated my job in 2000. So I went into pharmaceutical sales, got the job out of 27 people because nobody wanted it. So they gave the job to me. I was the 27th person, but it was just such a large territory to cover. And then when this came to pass, at first, I reviewed it and I was thinking about it. And then I thought, gee, was, you know, I still feel as though the approximately 30 years that I feel I put in as public service, including teaching, maybe I had something that I could offer, some sort of experience that I would be able to pass on to the other 10 members if I were fortunate enough to be elected and hopefully make a change.
If elected, do you feel it's appropriate for the council members to have a daily presence in the courthouse, or do you feel that you'd prefer to be available to the public in some other way?
I don't think the daily presence in a courthouse serves a purpose. I think that it's like a school board member going throughout the school and stopping into the classrooms. You always wonder, what is he doing here? Is he spying on me? I think that the manager who is picked is the person who's going to, like a football coach, he's going to pick his heads of the departments and he's going to direct them to do their job. They in turn will report to him, he in turn will report to the Chair, who in turn will report to the council members. Now, if they have a problem with something, they can make this known to the Chair, who can then make it known to the manager, who then will go through. But I think allowing the council members to move in and out of the courthouse and look at things that are going on kind of makes that situation a little tenuous. A fellow that's working with me right now, I taught him in school and we've been friends ever since, and he laughs because when he came over to the county office when I was the Chairman in 1981, I took him around to see the offices. And I used to walk around all the time, "Hey, how you doing? How's everything?" And I never used to look. That was your job. If you were running the budget office, I don't want to know about it. That's your job. If you mess up, you better have an answer. And I'm going to be the one you're going to have to answer, shouldn't if I don't accept it, you're going to be gone. So we were walking around in this one office, and after we left, he started laughing. He said, "Did you see that?" And I said, "No, what?" He said, "The one girl saw you walk in, all of a sudden, she started typing." I said, "So what's so difficult about that?" He said, "She didn't have any paper in the typewriter." So you know, it creates a little discord in there when you have managers and so council members going around.
Would you vote to approve the hiring of a relative to a county authority board or commission?
No.
Do you have an area of expertise that you would bring to council? Numbers and budgeting, a legal background, a love of research, experience in negotiation? Is there a particular area that...
I do have in negotiations. I negotiated for seven years with the Wyoming Valley West Teachers Association. And in fact, in 1980, when I became a Commissioner, we had a strike here in the county. I think it was in about June or July. And it went on for about two and a half or three months, and there was no resolve that appeared to be coming forth. So some of the fellows who were friends of mine came over and asked if I would sit down and talk to them over at the warehouse at the county, which I did. And when I explained to the people who were there what we were offering, they were all amazed because their union representative wasn't telling them that. And I said, "This is what we're offering you. We want this back from you, but here's what we're giving you instead." And they couldn't believe it. In three days, they were all back to work. So I feel I have some negotiation skills. I think I have some management skills, particularly after my nine years in the Assessor's Office, where there were many problems, minor, but they were there, and we corrected them. We improved the operation of the office we had, where we used to give away maps and record cards for nothing. We now put a fee on the preparation of a map, charged for the preparation of the map and the paper. And if you wanted record cards, we charged you to take the record cards. At the end of the first year, there was a plus of $68,000 right there. Now, that's not a lot of money, but that's $68,000 we were giving away before. Now, we're keeping it at home. So, and those people were charging their clients that price. So you know, it wasn't a big deal. So I think that that management area could be helpful. Again, however, with the manager, if he sees fit to ask me as a council member, if I'm fortunate enough to be there, he or she says, you know, "I need some help here, I would be more than glad to offer." However, as the manager is working, if he's doing his job, then there would be no need for him to come back to me, except for me to relay my ideas to the council chair and the rest of the council as to, maybe this should be done, or maybe something else should be done.
Aside from the particular management skills, do you think you have a characteristic that you would bring to this council, just an attribute that you have that you think would be helpful?
Well, I like business to be done as business. I think county government today is big business. When you're talking about a $460 million deficit, somebody didn't pay attention to business. I think today, the fact that I do have business experience, I was the manager of an insurance office for five years, and it did rather well. So well, in fact, that I was making more money than my regional manager, and it wasn't too pleasing to him. So he closed my office up and combined it with another and gave it to a friend of his for $200,000 a year. When I did the pharmaceutical sales, in one year's time, I was Salesman of the Year because I went to areas where they had never been approached before. And in a business manner, I tried to show them what I could do for them, and I worked with them. I think that the business sense that I have experienced as a Commissioner, as a pharmaceutical rep and in the office downstairs in the Assessor, has played an important part in how I feel I can be of help if I am lucky enough to win.
Do you have specific suggestions for where you think money can be saved or where the county can find revenue?
Yes, I do. I think that there are areas where money can be saved. We have a lot of offices where there is double work being done, two people doing the same job, or one person doing 20 minutes of their own job and the rest of the day is somebody else's work. When I became a Commissioner in 1980, I became a Commissioner of Frank Crossen Sr. And of course, he had 13 years of experience on the job, and he knew the specific areas where there should be corrections made. I joined in with him and we eliminated 19 jobs. As is normally the case, there was a lawsuit that was conducted. Frank Crossen unfortunately died in January of 1981. So the case was dropped because he was the main witness. I was just a second. When he made a motion, I seconded because I went on his word of 13 years' experience to say, this...now, we saved $173,000, $193,000 the first year for the county. Now, that doesn't seem like a big money, but at that time, that was a big dollars. The next year, we saved $173,000 because it was only a partial payment back. However, the big loss in that regard was that Frank Crossen and I had to pay our own legal fees. So I lost out on that. It cost me $65,000 as part of the legal fees to save the county that money. So I finally got it paid off in 1987 after I took a loan. But there are areas today, I recommended to the Assessment Board when I was there, one in particular, that we used to give people money to travel to the different areas. For example, you would take the books to Lake Lehman, the tax books, and back. Well, we used to have a person do that and put down 89 miles round trip. Well, that was about 26 miles. We would have a person that would go from the courthouse to Swar值ville. Traditionally, 40 miles was what that person charged. It's three and a half over, three and a half back, and all the streets in Swar值ville are nine miles. So that's only 14 miles, but that person charged 40. So what I did was, I said, "Okay, here is what the jurors get to go from Swar值ville to the courthouse, and I'll allow you some error that you made of three miles." And we cut the costs tremendously. I suggested, but it was not followed through, that each of the persons who use company cars, county cars, that we leased them. We could lease these cars for $199 a month, but that's not the way things are done. The way things are done, there are, we'll give you a job as a field assessor for, I don't know what it is now, let's say $18,000 a year. That's not much money, but you can pick up the difference on your travel time. So our travel vouchers usually averaged total about $68,000 a year, when we could have used five cars at approximately $1,000 a month, $12,000 a year, we could have saved $58,000. But I couldn't talk about that. Nobody wanted to listen to me.
And do you think that applies again today?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I think there are areas in a lot of departments where I'm sure, there are good people over there, but you know, when you have somebody that's getting away with murder, then somebody else is...I had one friend of mine over there that when I left in 1983, we wore name tags to identify ourselves. We all wore name tags. And when I left, they stopped using them. When I came back in the Assessor's Office, I said, "We're using the name tags again" in the Assessor's Office. So one of my good friends, in fact, he was a guy that came over and talked to me in 1981 to get the strike ended. He came in and I said to him, "Yes, can I help you?" "How you doing?" I said, "What can I do for you?" "Oh, come on, come on, come on." I said, "I don't know who you are." He said, "I left it in my car." He went back out his car, come back on with his name tag on. "Mike, how are you?" And in a month's time, because one of the secretaries in another office was horrified when a fellow walked in disheveled but worked for the county and she didn't know it, she got scared. And she complained to her boss, who in turn said, "Hey, everybody wears name tags." So you know, there are things, they have to maintain, the management today has to maintain control over his office. I think that's where the, if we had had good management control right along, maybe these things wouldn't have been, maybe it wouldn't have happened, maybe we wouldn't be so far and whole as we are now.
What do you feel is the county's responsibility in funding outside organizations such as public libraries?
Well, when I was a Commissioner, I opposed it. I opposed it, and I'll tell you why I did that. There were people who were lawyers, doctors, students, that were using the Osterhaus Library over in Wilkes-Barre, and they weren't charged. And they were the ones using it, and we were funding it. And I said, "Why don't you put a fee on them, and we'll try to help out with the difference?" But they wouldn't do it. And I don't know how they have it now, if they do have it, but they didn't then. They wanted the county to fund their organization. And it was just something that we weren't going to take on because, as I said, we felt that they should be partly responsible since if you go over there, most of the time, it's lawyers and college students using the facilities.
It is the Osterhaus Free Library. I think it's part of their mission to offer services for free, and if they were to make an exception for one, it'd be difficult for another. So today, would you be in favor of doing away with the funding that they...
Well, that again, would not be my choice. That would not be my choice whether I was Chairman of the Board or I was a member of the Board. That would be the choice that would be made by the manager to say, "Look, this is too costly for us, present it to the Board," and then the Board would have to evaluate. Or he would say, "This is perfect. It has to be done." I would probably say to you, my thoughts have changed in this regard. I think that that probably is a condition where we should fund, as I feel about Moon Lake. You know, you're not going to make money on Moon Lake. Moon Lake's a loser as far as money's concerned, but it's a public service. It has been a public service. When Moon Lake was really gone, it was a beautiful, beautiful place with swimming, hikers, picnics, people with their trailers there on weekends. It was a going place. The marina was absolutely beautiful. And then through the years, it deteriorated, but it's not a moneymaker.
What would you say is a reasonable fringe benefit package for county employees, such as a number of sick days or number of vacation days?
I don't know what their sick days are now, but I know when I was a Commissioner and we settled a union package, I believe we got back from the union, and I say "got back," two days, sick days, and extended the workday an hour to 4:30. They used to quit at 3:30. We extended it to 4:30. I think that I'm not in favor of, I am in favor of the sick bank. They have a sick bank over there right now, and I was the one that presented that idea in 1980, 81, because when I was a teacher, I had worked hard as a teacher negotiator to have the sick day bank established. Because if a person is sick, runs out of the days, I felt it was only the humane thing to offer them the opportunity to get better. And as it turned out, the first year, there was a man who was the mayor, I think of Dupont or Avoca, got cancer. I'm more sympathetic for him now because I have cancer, but he got cancer. And he took advantage of the sick day bank. And thank God, after years' time of chemotherapy, he was cured, and he finished 10 more years of work at the county, was never one to take advantage of days or anything like that. And for me to say, "I'll give you a day." If every person works there, gives a day, that's $1,000, almost $1,000 that's in the sick bank. Now, some people, as I heard, and I'm not certain of it, tried to take advantage of it. But it's made up of a board of administration and employees who evaluate and determine whether or not the person applying qualifies. But I like that kind of thing.
If elected to this council, would you be interested in serving as its Chairman? And if not, what qualities would you seek in the person that occupies that post?
I think the person that's going to be the Chair, he or she, has to be able to sit down and talk to the people that are the rest of the group. It's going to be a diverse group, as you know, from Democrat, Republican to Independent. There are going to be some people on there that are going to be solely, and I hope everyone there is going to be solely interested in promoting the well-being of the county. But I have a gut feeling that there are going to be one or two people on there that are going to be there just for the purposes of destruction. I would not support anybody that felt that way. I would support a person that says they are going to go in there to make the council as professional as possible, to deal with a manager who is a professional and can carry the ideas of the council, regardless if he disagrees or she disagrees with the person who presented it, carry that idea faithfully to the manager, hopefully for resolution.
Is it a job that you would want?
Is it a job that I would want? I sat with a fellow the other night by the name of John Ruckno, and I whispered in his ear, I said, "John, I could tell you who you want to be a manager because I could tell you who I want to be a manager." And he said, "Who's that?" I said, "You want you, and I want me." So yes, I think that I would like to serve as the Chairman. I would like to take the opportunity to conduct a meeting. I'm sometimes disappointed when I sit at the Transition Meetings that they kind of run out of hand. You know, it gets a little carried away.
And if you could clarify something for me, you said you think a couple people might be hoping to cause destruction. What do you mean by that?
Well, I just feel that there are one or two people possibly in their presentations to date that have made note of the fact, for example, one person said that this is the worst former charter government there is, but yet is running for that position, walks out on Transition Meetings. And frankly, I personally feel was in part responsible for the position that we're in and is going to be a detriment.
Obviously, there's always a certain level of media interest in county operations. I think we're going to see more so at the start of next year. Not only this news outlet, but others will be focused on it. What do you think's the appropriate way for council to communicate with the news outlets in this area? Do you think they should designate one person as spokesperson, or do you think every council member should be available?
Yeah, I like that idea. And I'll tell you, when I, I didn't present it as such to be a representative to the media, but I presented it as if Macon Aqua has a problem, 11 people aren't going to run to Macon Aqua, but we could break up the county into 11 different sectors and say, "Okay, now, if there's going to be a problem that's going to occur in Macon Aqua, okay, Joe's going to take care of it. If there's going to be a problem that's going to occur over in Jenkins Township, Betty's going to take care of it." So something comes up, we're going to jump on it right away. Don't let it fester. Get someone over there to find out what the problem is, bring it back to the manager, let he or she, or to the Chairman, let he or she then present it to the manager and say, "Okay, as far as the press is concerned, I think it would be..." I probably would say, for the safety of getting the material correct, the managers would probably be the one, or a designee of the manager would be the one to communicate to the press. Because even by today's standards, for our Commissioners to sit down and discuss budget, it's beyond me. Because when I sat as a Commissioner, I didn't understand the budget. My budget manager was Tom Lavine, and he ran the budget. And he would come upstairs and say, "We're not meeting our budget here because..." And then he would go with his staff and he would work. And his staff was small at the time. I remember one time, he went to Lakehurst, New Jersey with Jimmy Bach to buy something, and they had a, they came back with a paper and it said on it, "Cost of Supplies, $221,000." I said, "What the hell are you guys doing? I'm not going to jail for you. This is crazy. They're laughing at me." I said, "I'm serious. I'm not going to take the heat for you spending that kind of money. You know you have to have a bid or a certified bid at the Anamo." And they pulled out the papers and they bought 100 pairs of shoes for the prisoners for a dollar a pair, and 100 mattresses for the prisoners for $2 a pair. And they bought a forklift that was broken for $300 and some dollars, and they brought it back here and fixed it, but it's probably still working over there today. But they had picked this stuff up, and it scared me at first, really scared me, that I thought, "Oh my God, I'm going to have to answer for this." And fortunately, I could get a good answer.
Questions from the group at this point? Is there anything?
How is your health?
My health, I feel I'm fine. I did have seven weeks of, by accident, two years ago, to bore you. I had pain on my shoulder. And I'm the kind of guy, I get a pain, I sit to my wife, "Oh, it's my heart." So we went over to the hospital, 1:00 in the morning, and they take your blood. I was chasing spiking fevers for a while, couldn't, my doctor couldn't figure out why. And the doctor come back and said, "Oh, your blood enzymes are fine, but you have leukemia." I said, "Well, your bedside manners are terrible." So I immediately was connected with an oncologist who put me on medication, and I have since maintained control of it. And then with the fevers going up and down, they finally broke it down to stones in my bile duct. So I had them removed. And my doctor says, "Now, to be safe, let's take your gallbladder out so you don't get infection." So they did a laparoscopic, he took my gallbladder out, and sure enough, got an infection. So I spent 10 days in the hospital, 41 days on IVs, three times a day. But I feel good. I felt good even when I was there, except the pain, I had some terrific pain. I thought I was tough. But give me the paper to sign and confess, I'll do it. Just don't torture me.
Do you feel after this, obviously?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. And I, for a while, you know, I'm saying to myself, you know, "Are you going to be able to do this?" And I've been testing myself by going to meetings and sitting through meetings and visiting people, and you know, I kind of feel like, yeah. Mentally, I know I'm prepared. Physically, I'm pretty sure I'm prepared.
May I ask what you're doing this month in terms of campaigning?
I'm trying to get to every place I can to say hello to everybody. I like to kid around and say, "This is better than a Polish funeral. There's one person alive at the Polish funeral, there's always one person dead." And I get to everything that I can just to say hello, renew old friends, make new friends, hopefully answer any questions that people have. A lot of people have a misconception about the Charter. I had one good friend of mine said, "Boy, oh boy, this is going to be great knowledge jobs you're going to control." I said, "I'm not going to control any jobs." And he, "What do you mean?" I said, "It's the Human Resources Department that's going to control the jobs. You qualify, you get a job. You don't qualify, you don't get a job." You know, well, you can put your name in as a reference. No, no, the council is not going to make a reference. It's going to be, it's going to impact on the person in Human Resources Office because if they see the Chairman of the Board, he or she's name on there, it's going to make, play a lot of weight. Redact is the word that a lot of people are using. Redact, redact the names and the addresses and pick the most qualified. And the people now are starting to get to understand, it's too bad that there wasn't some form of a public forum to educate everybody in the county about the Charter so that they could make a good, solid, sensible, sane decision. But emotions played a big part on people for it and people against it in the last election. And I guess the fours were more important. I was never opposed to the three Commissioner former government, but I think it's mandated that a change has to be made. And they may go back to three for them.
How much do you expect to spend on this election?
Money? Well, probably now, we have spent maybe $1,400, $1,500. Ads, and getting around to the different functions is every bit an ad. You get to see as many people there as you might, not as many as you get to read the papers, but you get a chance to be seen, to be heard, explain yourself. And we bought some simple cards and a couple of buttons, ads...
I'm sorry, do you expect to spend more, or do you think that'll be about it, $1,500?
We're having a party on the 25th, and you're invited, if you'd like, to come over and have some pizza and hot dogs and whatnot. And I don't know what it's going to cost me. So we probably, we may spend, we may spend... So we probably, we may spend, we may spend another $400, $500. But it'll be under $2,000, I think.
Have you joined with any other council candidates to form a coalition?
No. No. No, I don't feel that anybody that's running should have to, have to carry my baggage and I don't feel that I should have to carry theirs.
Jen, is there anything that I didn't ask that you particularly want to know at the moment?